Great, excellent. Good morning, Commissioners. In our continued excellence around budget information.
Good introduction.
Well, here from our Parks team, their capital improvement program for next five years. And before you, you have some support materials. You may notice the mapping is similar to the large maps here, so we can reference both. And then Byron and the team will go over this beautifully colored spreadsheet. But without further ado, I'll introduce our director Byron Fanning, and he'll introduce his team.
Thank you, Lysian. I also wanted to point out that these things have been emailed to Erica. They were, once we submitted, there were a few things that we were asked to bring. And I think they help with clarity for what we're presenting today. So I'm Byron Fanning, Director of Parks, Open Space and Cultural Arts. Nice to see you all again. And with me is Cindy Stringham, who's our Manager of Planning, Design and Construction, and our Parks, Open Space and Trails Manager, Trevor Graff. And also our Deputy Director Gabriel Rodriguez is with us today. So they're all here to help answer any questions that you might have as we go through our presentation. And we can move to the second slide, the agenda. So what we wanted to do first was give you kind of an overview of kind of the thoughts behind the focus areas for our plan, which would include our Parks, Open Space and Trails Master Plan from 2022, which was part of the Advancing Adams Planning Process, as well as outreach and feedback that we receive from many different sources, stakeholders, through projects and through many sources, and I'll talk about that in just a little bit, as well as your feedback. And then talk about the focus areas for the plan. Like to discuss how we're funded and where our money comes from, how much we have. And then talk a little bit about human capacity. What our staffing situation is like in our department to maintain the properties that we have. And then we'll go into the five-year plan. And that's the spreadsheet that's before you today is the proposed five-year plan with all the projects that have been submitted through the CIP Committee and the CIP process. And then talk about some unfunded projects that are out there. And then open discussion about anything that you'd like. So with that said, going back to the Advancing Adams Parks, Open Space and Trails Master Plan, there were five themes as part of that plan. And they're listed for you here on this slide. Natural resource and wildlife habitat protection and repair and enhancement. Agricultural lands, rural character and places of cultural significance. Diverse park and recreation enhancement, which includes safety and accessibility. Partnerships, regional coordination and stewardship, as well as dynamic trail connections. Those were the five theme areas. The plan also included a detailed implementation plan as part of that process. And this is really kind of the foundation or the base for everything. So everything that's been proposed, with the exception of one project, were part of either this planning process or the Riverdale Regional Park Planning Process, which is referred to in this post-plan as a process that needed to be completed as we move forward. So everything that we're putting before you today was part of a plan with one exception, and that's the Veterans Memorial Amphitheater, which came with the direction of the board. So with that said, that's kind of the static plan. It's a snapshot in time in 2022 of kind of where the system was, where our needs were and what we needed to do. Kind of the next piece that we take into consideration is outreach and feedback. So there are many opportunities for us to do this. Certainly during those formal planning processes, Advancing Adams did a lot of outreach, and we received a lot of feedback during that process. Another big planning process we've done recently that we've shared with you on several occasions is the Experience Yourself Platte Plan, which we're doing in conjunction with the Mile High Flood District, Brighton, Thornton and Commerce City. And that one's talked about the entirety of the South Platte River Corridor from Denver up to Brighton. And in that plan, talked about many different opportunities, projects, areas that needed focus. And from three lenses, it was maintenance, it was trail connectivity, and it was human connectivity. And so there's a few projects that we'll refer back to that today. KLO is the group that we've hired of kids that you've met that are doing outreach for us on the big projects, three big projects at Riverdale Regional Park. The two COP-funded projects, the Brantner Gulch and the Riverdale Regional Park Improvements, including the fairgrounds, as well as the South Platte River Project that came out of that Experience Yourself Platte Plan. In addition to that, the Riverdale Regional Park Planning Process offered a lot of feedback. And then we received feedback from just the planning processes for projects. So for example, City View Park, we did an extensive outreach for that project. We met with schools, we met with the community, we went to several community events. We had meetings to talk about the planning process and what the community wanted to see in that. We've done the same for the Bluffs and for Willow Bay. And that's an opportunity to get, again, some more formal feedback. And then there's the informal feedback, as people visit the park, visit our trail system, they talk to our staff, they send emails in, they use the point-click-fix process through the county. And these are all areas where we get feedback about what we do and what we offer. Can you venture a guess as to what the top request is of our system? Believe it or not, it's restrooms. They want restrooms with running water. We hear it every. It's kind of interesting. And number two is shade. The other thing that they really want is shade. And if you, you know, if you're at a, I think you were all at Festival Latino this weekend. If you noticed when the sun came out, everybody was huddled under shade spots. And we hear it all the time that they want more shade, they want more shade along the trail, they want more shade in the parks, they want more shade to be able to kind of take a respite from the blazing sun and what they do. Not too long ago, we retrofitted the playground at, not at Rotella Park, with shade structures on top of the park structures, because there was so much, so many issues with shade, with the playground equipment getting hot, with people just not wanting to use the playground equipment because there was no shade. So these are things that we hear constantly, but it's feedback like that that informs, you know, what, how do we plan? And what do we do to try to make the system better for our community? And then your feedback, of course. Many components of the plan came directly from you, not just the plan that we've submitted, but also recent projects that we've completed were ideas that you've had or things that you've talked to us about. And we're constantly listening to you and listening to the community to try to find these things to make the system better. The third piece that's not, I don't have a slide for, but I think is important to point out is really the upkeep of the key assets within the system. We have struggled with that traditionally. When I first started, we had a system full of 40-year-old park benches and picnic tables, shelters that were falling apart, frankly. There were some concrete and stone picnic tables that were from the 60s that were still in use in the system, which we've mostly gotten rid of now. And many that were damaged, graffiti, paint had been torn off of it, been cleaned so often that there was no paint on them anymore. And the system really ended up getting in disrepair. Previous leadership within the department was very, just continually focused on buying new things and not really on taking care of what we have. And so we've really put in a significant effort to try to do that as we move forward. And even the Riverdale Regional Park Improvements Project is replacing facilities that were built 60 years ago and have lived their life. So that's an important piece to consider, again, given the resources that we have available to us. And the next page, kind of taking that feedback and looking at it from a planning standpoint for us, kind of our process is to then take that feedback and try to create some focus areas. And these will change from year to year, maybe not significantly, but they'll change based on your feedback, based on feedback from the community. And so the first piece is provide residents equitable access to the Colorado experience. And that came out of several of our planning processes from Advancing Adams to that Experience Yourself Platte and then conversation with our community. But it includes access to water, to hiking and biking opportunities, trail experiences, access to outdoor events, environmental education, and leveraging partnerships to the best of our ability to do those things. Enhance existing properties, as I just talked about. Improving trail conditions and connectivity and making sure we have money for when the trail heaves because a tree is getting older. And now we have a crack in the concrete trail, which creates major problems for bikes. Making sure we have the ability to react and fix that. Improve playground conditions and accessibility. We have no accessible playgrounds in the community right now in our parks. And so that's an important goal for us to try to resolve that in the near future. Golf course improvements, our golf course enterprise pays for everything. It pays for every capital expense, it pays for all the operating costs on the golf course. The group that we contract with to manage the golf course does an incredible job, but we've got to keep those facilities up to date so they can continue to bring in that money to be able to keep investing back into that course. And then water and irrigation improvements, you've heard me talk about that quite a bit. But it's not just getting water and finding water rights. It's addition to that, it's how can we make our system more efficient? We have several issues with that in some of our parks. And also looking at beyond just the irrigation, how about the turf that we have out there? How much of it do we really need? How much can we convert to native? And then when we do do turf, can we do a less water use type turf than Kentucky bluegrass, for example? We're looking at all those things, and they all take money. We have to experiment with things. For example, we put the Tahoma 31 in at Riverdale to test it, and we found some challenges with it, so we're working with a turf farm to try to enhance that in a way that it's not gonna start so late and die so early to get a little bit more use out of it for the system. Wayfinding signage has continued to be a focus for us. When I first started with the county, we really didn't have any. We had a piecemeal wayfinding system that didn't have a theme or any kind of a unified approach, except for the park ID signs at the parks. Mile markers for enhanced safety. We have worked with our police and fire partners to understand what their biggest challenges are with our system. And it's the fact that when somebody calls with a 911 issue on the trail, they can't find, they can't figure out where they are. Now with mile markers, it's much easier to identify where you are on the trail when you're making a call like that. They're every half-mile, which makes it much easier for police and fire to kind of track you down and do something to help you when you need it. Wayfinding for navigation, there were plenty of places on the trail system where you can kind of get lost and not know kind of where you are, and you get turned around and go in the wrong direction. But we're working to fix that with new signage so that it's clear where the landmarks are, where the other trails are, where a light rail is, for example. And it's a real focus to try to create that connectivity, and these trails are used by commuters all the time. Interpretive and educational opportunities, we have a few of these out there. And it's something that we're going to continue to try to work into the plan. And then acquisitions, the plan for how do we, what do we do, where do we buy land, what do we buy? You know, I think starting, our plan is starting with buffer properties adjacent to existing parks and open space to keep those areas natural as best we can. To establish a presence out east, which is something that we really want to do, but it's going to take more resources than what we currently have. And then Historic Splendid Valley continuing to invest in preserving the agricultural heritage of the county, along with a key tenet of the Parks, Open Space and Trails Master Plan, which was to look to try to achieve the goal of every incorporated, unincorporated resident being able to walk to a park within 10 minutes of their house. And in areas like Berkeley, Welby, Twin Lakes areas, that's not possible currently. So looking when there are opportunities, and certainly opportunities to partner, we're going to look to try to do that, to come up with some opportunities for those walkable parks from people's house. And I just talked a lot. Do you have questions or thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So you, on your last slide, you talked about outreach and resident feedback, and you talked about the need for restrooms. People always want to talk about golden potty and the need for shade. You also talked about old benches and tables. And so one of the things I was curious about is when you look at these focus areas for the five-year plan, where are those questions, concerns, feedback from residents embedded in this plan? So for restrooms, or where would you put restrooms? Would it be enhanced existing properties?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just trying to connect the two, right? What we're hearing from the public, what are the outcomes that we're looking for in the five-year plan?
Yeah, and so you know the access to water is direct from feedback that we've received from the community. We don't have an opportunity right now for them to access water. There's no lake that you can swim in, there's not a developed access to the river anywhere. So that's another one that we hear all the time. Restrooms are part of that, they're part of that providing equitable access. They're typically, that's not typically like a project that we do so much as we're looking at developing or redeveloping, we look at how we provide that. So for example, when we did the Veterans Memorial, one of the early thoughts was to put porta-potties out there, because that's kind of been how we've done things. But a lot of the feedback we received was, we want running water restrooms. So we did that there, even though we don't have a connection to the sewer, we actually have trucks come and pump those restrooms out on a regular basis. But that, and that's the first place we'd ever done that, that was a test. And now as we move forward, as we develop properties that are more of a regional draw, that's the expectation as to what we would put in place. And so it may not be directly listed, but that's how it's informing the approach that we take. Shade, we've done a lot with shade, just even in the last year, hearing that feedback. Trevor's added a number of shade structures, and we're looking at ways to try to get those in an affordable way that our small construction team can put them up and then include those in projects at parks, and also looking at making it more useful. We had a lot of little shade shelters at Riverdale Regional Park out in the grass that weren't very useful. You could only sit like four people under them. Now we're looking at, maybe let's put a bigger shelter, because the two big shelters we have at Riverdale Regional Park are rented every weekend of the year, and they're super busy. Adding a third by the playground might make more sense than a small one. So that's the way we're kind of incorporating that in. And it's about also making it equitable and looking across our system and where do we need these type facilities.
Awesome, okay. And then for old benches and tables, do we have an inventory and replacement plan?
We do, and we've done a really good job of that. That was one of the first things I really focused on when I came, is trying to find the money to get Trevor to the ability to start doing that. And we've done a great job of replacing those throughout the system in the last few years. And some of the oldest, I think, are gone. Did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we use Cartograph to manage all of those assets, where they're at, what year they were installed.
Condition they're in.
The condition.
So I think that, I appreciate that you guys were able to speak to that, because one of the things I want us to be very clear about is if somebody from the public saw the five-year plan, I want them to see that their feedback is directly linked to the work that we want to try and accomplish in our parks. And so another question that I have, and maybe this is out of scope, I'm not quite sure, but you know, five years from now, how are we going to be measuring success? How do we say, Byron, five years from now, you met all of these goals? Like, how do I put numbers? How do we set goals? How do we be more quantitative to our approach when it comes to the five-year plans? Because I want to be able to say, five years from now, Byron, you met every single goal. You've increased, I don't know, mile markers by X percent. You've met your goal for potties at some X number of locations. I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the goals are, I'm just totally making things up. But you replaced, you know, 25% of your inventory, and that was your goal. Like, I want to be able to point at, how do you define success after this five-year plan? I think all of these are great ideas, it's all important work that, you know, the community could get behind. We love our open spaces here in Colorado, that's not a secret, and so this work is very important. But what I want us to do as a county is make sure that after this five-year focus area plan comes to fruition, that we have some measurable outcomes, that we could tell the public, look, this is what we did with your tax dollars to meet the needs that you asked us to meet. You know, and I think being very clear and direct in that communication helps just, you know, keep us accountable, but also just helps the community know, look, we want your feedback, we're going to implement your feedback. Like, this is how this process is going to work moving forward.
That's excellent feedback, we can certainly do that. And we can even point backwards to, you know, we had no signage on the trails. And now we have, we can list how frequently, how many signs we've built, how many we've put in the ground. We can do all that, so I think that's excellent, we'd be happy to do that. And we could generate an annual report each year that speaks to some of these things that we could share with you and also with the community. And also included in some of the other community feedback that COMS puts out. But we can certainly do that, we'd be happy to.
I love it, thanks. I'm just gonna hop in here real quick. First of all, thank you for taking time out to do the CIP presentation. I think what prompted me, I did the ask to Dion and team, is we do regularly hear from the Public Works Department on their projects, and they come to the board annually, if not biannually, and saying, these are the project priorities for the board. We just want to make sure before, nearly every January, they come forward and say, we want to make sure that these are the projects you want to advocate around. Knowing that those are much more expensive projects that they're advocating, they're also seeking out funding in different places, and we may not get all the funding that we apply for, but we know that that's what they're working on. So I appreciate that, and that was kind of the brainstorm here, is like, what is the priority for the Parks Department? So to go off of where Julie, you know, you went through several slides, even this slide that we're currently on, the focus areas for the five-year plan, is how do we prioritize all of this? Do we have the financial capacity? Do we have the human capacity to get all of this done? What does that look like? Whether it's over five years, you know, five years is a really good, I know that's the Capital Improvement Plan timeline. I experienced, dollar in my city council jar, that, you know, do you do 100 projects and you put a dollar to 100 projects? Or do you do two projects and you put $50 to two projects and knock off the list? And that's really a management philosophy outside of the CIP of how do we accomplish that? And I think Julie brought up the same thing I did regarding how do we measure progress? What does progress look like? Whether it was this slide, the first slide on the 2022 Master Plan, is where I flagged that, is how are we measuring progress? And then I'm just gonna say it right now is regarding outreach, because I think one of the other commissioners, Steve would have brought this up as well, is that we're on, we're looking, we have a different board, and our board is, we have a lot of horsepower on this board that we may have lacked when I came on, we had lacked some direction as well. So we're going a million miles an hour in every direction, and I think this board is much more considerate on being intentional of things that we want to work on and that are priorities for us. So the outreach, on the Bluffs and Willow Bay, I didn't see any of that. I think I saw some things on Willow Bay when I was on council. I haven't seen anything on the Bluffs, the Bluffs, right? Is that what it's called? So, and we don't have to talk about it now, we can take questions and have some discussion time at the end. But I agree also with Julie, I, and you know this, Byron, I did the contract for the Portalets in Aurora, literally thousands, it felt like. And my family, you know, we're gonna do a big family reunion picnic, and I don't know if it's my family, it's every family, they would rather probably not attend. They will leave, they will leave an event to go to somewhere, a real restroom somewhere else. That just happened over the weekend, we're at my nephew's baseball tournament, and they refuse to use, and I agree with them. They will leave, they will get in their car, pack up their blankets and their wagons, and they will leave, and then they will, you know, it's, I get it. So Julie's right, especially, you know, all, I know you made some modifications to, was it the Veterans Memorial, accessibility and changing tables and whatnot for kiddos? And so I really appreciate that lens as well as we go forward. But I think that's my comments for now. Do you have anything, Emma, or she can?
Yeah, so I would like to add that, first off, I love what you brought up, and I completely agree. I think for me, the biggest issue is you're talking about a lot of things that sound really cool. And all of them add community connectivity, and all of them answer concerns for community. But when I'm looking at, speaking from my lens, a really lean 26, and per our conversations, an even worse 27, I am very hesitant to add park amenities, as much as I love them, when we're looking at cutting safety net jobs. And I am currently holding a lot of tension, because on the one hand, when community is economically hard up, parks, libraries, open space, festivals, free festivals are the respite. That's how I got through my childhood, my mom never had any money. You know, we never had any money, and we went to all the free festivals, that's what we did. Like, my childhood is like, oh, we went to this festival, we went to that festival, we went to the library, you know?
We did too.
Right, and that's how we made it through. Like, I remember even, when the libraries my mom worked at, you could check out art for the walls. They had a library of art, so we didn't actually own any wall hangings. Every three months, we'd check out a new piece of art and put it up on the wall, which is a really cool thing. Anything's really busy, I'm not going to give them a new project. But like, I'm holding this tension of everything you're talking about costs money at a time when we have less and are expected to have even less. And if we don't have well-resourced free amenities for the public, the quality of life will go down here in a variety of ways. And so I'm just, I don't have a thing to say, I really appreciate Lynn's questions, I think you're spot on, but I'm holding this tension of like, is this the year to improve playground conditions and accessibility? At what cost, to what, when, and how much can we hold and stabilize and improve access without expenditure?
Well, and I think as we go a little bit further along, you'll see, we don't have a lot of funding and we can't do all of these things. Well, and I, I think as we go a little bit further along, you'll see, we, we don't have a lot of funding to, and we can't do all of these things. There are things that are over five years. We have, we have a lot of this planned. However, um, like this year, there's not much. Because there just isn't, you know, the money we need to be able to fix the concrete and be able to fix the boards on the bridges and. Be able to react when um, our irrigation system goes down and some of those things. So we, that's a very. That's a big part of our focus. And then with, with other money, what can we do? And so that's the, as we go. We'll talk about the funding and also talk about human capacity and then kind of go through what's, what's in the plan that I think will speak to some of that.
Okay. I, I know that I prefer to be a ray of sunshine on parks and stuff, and I often am a rain cloud. And I. I just, I feel like I'm holding a lot of that tension right now. And I would prefer to be. Ha- have a different budget outlook, but the numbers don't bear that out. Sorry, I don't know, Chair, I don't know what to do with that. Like, Emma's like, it's all a bummer. We have no money.
I think we have more presentation and so. Bring it up and then we maybe have time for discussion at the end.
Sounds good. Thank you.
We do. And also, you know, as we get further into it, you asked about prioritization. We are gonna have a conversation about how we're prioritizing projects. But definitely want your input to if priorities shifted or if there's a different focus area, you know, what does that look like? That'll be part coming up here as well.
So funding sources, as we um, had just discussed, we'll move into that. The COPs, obviously you're aware of for the two big projects at Riverdale Regional Park. Um, obviously, one time funding not something we can count on, on a regular basis, our open space project fund. Um, and let me explain just for a second, kind of how the open space money works. So there's the open space tax. And out of the open space tax, um, roughly seventy percent is set aside for grant requests. Which we compete with the other cities and towns within Adams County for those grants. And then thirty percent is available in shareback. And that shareback goes directly to um, the cities and towns and unincorporated within Adams County. And we get um, um, an allotment based on our population. So um, with that money, we get about two million a year. And about five hundred thousand goes to Trevor to do the um, like the concrete repairs, the trail repairs, the. System-wide maintenance and it's small construction projects to fix those things uh, throughout the system. And then one point five million roughly is available for capital projects per, per year. And I was here yesterday for the sustainability uh, foundation. By comparison, the sustainability funding is a million dollars. Uh, we have one point five for the entire park system. So to speak to your, your uh, point, Emma, there's not that much money to be able to do the things that we. Really want to do. But we try to leverage that one point five million and get as much matching funds as we can through grants. And partnerships and a few um, agencies we've worked with are E four seventy on the bluffs project. To get money out of them for that project, Mile High Flood District, to leverage as many of those funds as we can, along with Public Works. To enhance our projects. And then um, grants. And so the Open Space Grant Program is again, that thirty percent is one area. And then uh, Great Outdoors Colorado, you've all heard of it. It's, it's an often misunderstood um, grant source. So GOCO. Um, is often the, the panacea. We'll get a GOCO grant. Um, GOCO is, is it difficult to get a grant? So they are half of the Colorado Lottery. So the Colorado, Colorado Lottery has two buckets. One is Conservation Trust Fund, which is their shareback, kind of like ours. And it goes out to every community. We get CTF. We used to use it for capital projects, but just before I came, the county manager pushed a number of our staff into it. So it's now pretty much all except between twenty to forty thousand dollars per year, just pays for maintenance staff. And uh, we didn't add more. We just took ours out of the general fund and put them in CTF. And um, the other part of it is GOCO and its grants. They're very competitive. Um, they're statewide. And the way GOCO works is you have to build a relationship with them. So you can't just go for a grant for your project and hope to get it. And when I first started, I thought that's what you could do, but we, you can't. So what we found is you, you start having an early conversation. You bring them in at the beginning, you show them how you do your outreach, you partner with them, you get them excited, you find. Kind of an internal person in GOCO to get excited about your project. And they champion it for you. And then you can have some success. Um, getting a GOCO grant. And so we've, we've put our eggs in the basket with the Mile High Flood District of. The project on the river that we've brought to you on several occasions. And we're working with GOCO to develop a grant for that project. Hopefully multimillion dollar grant, depending on, you know, what's available from GOCO. But they've been in from the ground floor on that project and are very much supportive of it. Once you have kind of identified a project area with them, they won't really do anything else with you in that region. So. They're very particular about how they do grants. And then there are other grants, state trails, uh, TIP grants. Which are through the feds, which are a pain, but um, worth it in some cases. And we've received um, state trails grants and transportation improvement grants. And then Colorado Water Conservation Board also offers grants. And there are others that we go after. Those are some of the ones that we've had some success with in the last few years. And the last bucket would be development fees. So when uh, there are developments built in unincorporated areas. Um, money is, uh, they either will build a park, um, or they'll dedicate parkland, or they'll provide money. And the money goes into the development, um, uh, development fees are collected by CED and tract. And then we can apply for those for a project um, to, to use to uh, to build something. So that's kind of where funding is. There's, there's not a lot available. And then human capacity is the, the next thing to discuss. So um, not only do we not have money to build a bunch of new things, we also don't have staffing really to, to maintain. A number of new things. We have um, um, we had a staffing study done in twenty nineteen that showed we were. Seven maintenance staff short and then additional um, uh, six uh, staff short in other areas. The department mostly buildings, uh, maintenance. But in parks maintenance, it was seven staff. Since that time, we've added a net two. And uh, but we've also added uh, property. And um, I have on this slide some. Uh, expectations for every hundred and fifty acres of open space. It's one FTE. These are our standards based on where we sit today with our staff. Um, fifteen acres of um. Active parkland, which is essentially irrigated turf. It's an additional FTE. And for every ten miles of trail, it's an additional FTE. Those are far and above the industry standards. So we looked at NRPA standards. Uh, the uh, APPA Institute for Facilities Management, which is Association of Physical Plant Administrators. And the ICMA standards. And they average about nine acres for um, active use parkland. Again, we're at fifteen uh, per FTE. And they average eighty acres of open space per FTE. And we're at a hundred and fifty acres of open space. So we're, we're fairly stretched. Um, the good news for us is we have a few advantages that most of the agencies don't have. One, a lot of our acreages is adjacent to Riverdale Regional Park. We have a shop there and we can get to our. Our acreage to take care of it pretty quickly. Whereas um, a lot of agencies, a lot of the, what's factored in is trailering equipment. Driving it to the site, taking it off the trailer and then doing maintenance. And driving to the site takes a lot of time. Um, our South Parks is located right on the South Platte Trail, which you can get on the Clear Creek Trail. And you can get to Elaine Valente Pelican Ponds, Rotella, very quickly from our South Park site. So. Where our maintenance shops are located gives us a little bit of an advantage that helps kind of with some of that uh, challenge that we have. In the fact that uh, we're, we're definitely more efficient than uh, industry standards. Um, the good news also is we have excellent staff. Trevor's been with us for a few years now. How many years, Trevor? A few. Um, and he's got some great staff working for him. We, we work hard on developing and training our staff. To uh, learn new things and to be flexible and be able to um, to take on more. And as a result, we've got a really good crew, but. But it's a small crew. And uh, when you see um, every year at uh, for fair, for Festival Latino, for uh. Pride, for any of our events, we have to call our South Park staff up to help supplement our North Park staff to be able to set up. And take down and clean up and put on those events. And when we do that, then that sets us behind in our maintenance. For kind of the rest of the system outside Riverdale Regional Park. So, you know, there are certain things that we, we, we can be efficient, but. There are moments where things drop and then we have to work hard to pick them back up. So um, we, I think we do an excellent job with what we have. We could take on a little bit more within kind of the, the envelope or the footprint that we have now. But we could not take on something big. For example, Willow Bay is, is planned and on the books. We do not have the ability to open that property and take it on with the staff that we have. We just couldn't do it. Um, same thing with um. Uh, doing a, a, another, a regional park down at the Confluence, which is a plan that we've discussed with you. We just don't have the staffing to be able to manage it. Um, a smaller infill thing we could take on, um, uh, open space property adjacent to Riverdale Regional Park. We could take on, but as you get to bigger areas, it becomes a challenge. So if we're gonna buy, you know, land in some of those areas. It would more or less have to sit unmaintained, which we do have some properties that we only maintain a few times a year because that's all we can get to them.
I have a quick question for. I don't know, Dion, Alicia, more of a philosophy question. So. I don't want to put words in your mouth, Byron, but I, we've heard this also from Human Services. What is the best practice when it comes to paying for staff? Is it having them come out of a, a dedicated fund such as, I don't know, was it open space? You have staff, staffing?
Uh, CTF.
Um, we saw the same thing in Human Services where we have personnel coming out of that fund. Is that the appropriate place to? Kind of book that? Or is it, do we do general? We can do more programming capacity in those funds? What, is there a best practice? I think it's a philosophy thing more than anything.
Yeah, I mean, it, it definitely depends on the funding source, right? And the stability or volatility of the funding source. And also programming associated with the funding. Um, you know, for some of our human services, um, support staff. Um, we have the ability within that, those federal grants to utilize some of that funding to pay for admin. Um, and pay for those activities within the administration of those brands um, with those federal funds. And we're able to leverage those federal funds and um, you know. Relieve some of the burden on the general fund for some of those um, types of programs that have that uh, overhead and admin baked in. Um, I don't know the decision-making, you know, for the previous county manager when it comes to maintenance staff. Um, being allocated through the Conservation Trust Fund. But um, sometimes it makes sense to do that. Um, again, when we're talking about taking on assets that uh, maintenance staff needs to be allocated to. And if it's allowable use for. That type of funding, um, it is one way that we're able to maintain ongoing uh, services for a particular funding source. Uh, without having to utilize the general fund. There's risks in that. Um, and the risk being is those funds, if they, you know, aren't. Stable, those funds go up and down, or if the work expands outside of the scope intended for those funds, then it may not make sense. Uh, we may not be able to actually continue doing that. And so it, it really kind of depends on the um, funding source and what activities are attached to that funding. I don't know, Alicia, if you recall how that was done, but for that one.
Yeah, I think that was even prior to me. So it's been a minute. Um, and really the thinking at the time was, how can we? Gain the staffing that we needed. And at the time, that was a resource. And often you'll see that. I don't know that we were in lean times really necessarily then, but we were struggling to meet our growth needs across the county. And so when you have folks funded out of general fund, of course, we have all the departments then competing. So I know that at the time it was Ray, he was looking at what other funding do we have? And are there dedicated slots that we could move some folks? We did that road bridge too. I think Brian talked a bit about that. And then in parks, just to try to get the staffing possible, take care of the assets that we had. So it's always um, really looking at the full picture and what resources we have available and how can we make the best use? We're looking at that all the time.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
So this next one, um, I have a, a more detailed version of this in front of you. This is the spreadsheet. Um, and includes the five-year plan. And um, to, to answer a question from earlier. Um, there's um, some consideration for uh, ranking or um. Prioritization here as well. And so you can see the priority column right next to the project column. Um, in front of you. And it won't be on the screen, but it's on the, the handout I gave you. And then the um. Focus area ranking consideration on the right hand of the sheet. And what this does is takes into consideration the. Uh, the areas that um, we talked about as our focus for this year, with a few additional considerations. Uh, included for ranking, as well as um, and two additional columns. One, for continuation of an existing project. Once we've kind of started something, we um, in my opinion, it's, it's important to finish it. Um, and then the other is our placer AI data um, on the far right. That just talks about how many visits uh, some of those properties get that are um, are listed as projects in the capital plan. And so when we look at the priority, which is the second column on the left, it's, it, how many of those boxes have an X in it? On the ranking, kind of um, gives you the um, the priority number on the left-hand side. So for example. South Platte River Coalition Project, which came out of that experience or South Platte Plan. Um, hits four of those boxes, continuation of an existing project, equitable access to the Colorado Experience. Uh, enhance and maintain existing asset. So there are some drop structures in the river that are failing. Uh, that need to be addressed by the flood district. And that's the impetus for, we could, when we replace those, we could just replace them functionally. Or we could enhance them and allow for access to the river, which is one of the goals of that Enhancer South Platte Project. And allow for uh, people to access the water and, and basically have a tubing or a rafting experience. Um, and then it hits um, safety. Um, uh, those drop structures are getting ready to fail. They're dangerous right now. And the idea would be to, to, to fix them and also to um, improve the health of the river as it, as it moves upstream.
Byron, just to clarify, in the priority ranking, four is the highest priority.
Right.
Going down. So. The number of factors that it, it needs, sorry.
Sorry. Thank, thank you. I wasn't clear. No. And so then three would be next. So the two that hit four would be the Riverdale Bluffs. And the South Platte um, River Coalition. And these, these factors are what we've come up with internally. So this, this is where we need your feedback. This is a proposed plan. This is not a, we're doing these things. This is for your, and this go, went through the CIP uh, committee. And um, these projects were rated and ranked. And some of them were um, uh, were recommended, some of them weren't. Um, uh, for example, the Fourth Barn, which is about. Uh, three quarters of the way down the page, uh, above a gray bar, uh, was not recommended by the CIP committee. It shows up here. Not that we're gonna spend that money or do that project, but it was what was proposed as part of the budget. So this is what we proposed. Not everything is, is going to move forward. Um, but it's also, we have our ranking for kind of why things were included. Um, in this uh, process. You know, and one that doesn't rank high is open space acquisitions. Um, it doesn't check all the boxes, but at the end of the day, we've got to have money available for that. If a property becomes available, that makes sense. We, we've got to have funding. And we don't have a lot of funding for it. We have three hundred thousand dollars, but that we would enhance with grant requests. To be able to uh, hopefully purchase something. And if something were above that, then that's when we would come to you and say, we have this opportunity. Do you want us to pursue it or, or not? And here's the funding we have available.
Hi.
Hi.
We both had our hands.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Whoever had their hand up first.
Um, sure. I really appreciate this. Um, this is really helpful. Um, I, I understand the factors that you're describing. For the rankings and the four is, are the highest winners.
Yes.
Um, with the Riverdale Bluffs open space, with the four that's there, um, it's one of the lower placer AI data. Um it's one of the lower placer AI data visitors at one thousand seven hundred.
It's because it's not open.
And I just wanted to confirm that that is because it's not currently an open facility.
Correct. And that's where some of the placer data doesn't necessarily.
It just says it's not open yet.
Correct. And if it were open, that number is gonna, especially with the regional trail going through, it will it will really increase. But for right now, there is a small trailhead there with really no access and no amenities. So some people visit it, but not much. And it's really more than anything else. There's neighbors that live near it that hop their fence and frankly drive their ATVs through there that.
Yeah, so we could.
Hard to stop.
Also stop that. Um in looking at this, like what is the time period for the placer AI data? Is that like since it became operational?
Thank you for asking that. It's the year of twenty twenty four.
Okay, alright. And it looks like our highest, see, we seem to top out with several places at one point two million.
That's all pretty much Riverdale Regional Park.
Okay, oh, so that's why they're all showing at one point two, because they're clustered. I was curious, like, what is magic about one point two million?
Right.
And it's more like they're all.
That that was the number for Riverdale Regional Park and you can on this ma- on these maps. And um these are gonna be sent orally and I can kind of explain. And you have, I we I tried to get these as big as I could, but I knew you might not be able to see them, so I provided you handouts. I have them as well. But the projects that are with a red box, yellow text, are ones that are included in the plan. Ones that have white text and a light green box are future projects that are not included in the plan.
Okay.
And then the yellow call out is just Riverdale Regional Park. And then this map here are the projects that are associated with Riverdale Regional Park. And as you can see, at one point two million people, obviously our most visited asset and really most projects are planned.
Does adding, so the one point two million is over the course of a year?
Yes, two uh twenty twenty four.
Wow, so with, okay. And do we have any, do you have any parsing out of that? I know we've seen it in the past of repeat visitors? Like how much of that is like?
I don't know how much.
Three hundred thousand people coming back again?
We can get that data. I don't have it with me.
Just curious.
We can get that.
You know, out the break now.
I can, you can.
Alright, that that's my question for now. I'm curious about the conversation.
Yeah, I I have a question, cuz I'm just curious about how this lays out. Um why are some of these projects coming from the general funds versus the open space funds? Why, why has some of this spilled over to the general fund? And is there a reason why we just don't try and keep all of this work in the open space project fund?
Some things are are open, are eligible in open space fund and some things aren't.
Okay.
And so and also, there's limit, there's only limited funding available in open space fund. So let me, let me break it down for you on a couple of things, Julie. So Riverdale Bluffs Open Space is the first one that shows up in the general fund. It's also in the open space fund. So we're leveraging as much funding from the open space fund, including grants as we can. We also are bringing in some partnership money from E four seventy and that's factored into the numbers on the page.
Okay.
And then the general fund money, the first two years, twenty six and twenty seven, is actually um funding that comes from the land dedication fees. So it's in the general fund, but it's dedicated money to be used to develop a park. Um the third year, the one point seven million is not, there's not enough money in the land dedication fees. There's not enough money in the open space fund. It's a general fund ask. The hope is between now and twenty twenty eight, more money will build up in the land dedication fund. And uh CED thinks there will be some that will build up. And then also, we're hopeful that um the fund balance for, it's a very conservative estimate for fund balance. For the open space fund, the hope is that will build up more and that that twenty twenty eight general fund ask will be reduced as much as we can. So we're trying not to use the general fund for that, in other words.
That's helpful. So do, is it typical that all, are you accounting for all of the land dedication fees in that fund?
The ones that are eligible to be used for a regional amenity, we asked for them, yes.
Yes, it's a lot, okay, alright.
And the way it works is you have to write, and Kristen could probably explain it better than I could. Um but you could, you have to write a letter to um to CED saying we'd like those funds for this project. And we've done that for the Bluffs to ask for that money to be set aside for it.
True, some criteria that follows. Yeah, there's criteria in state statute around eligible use of those funds and they just review it according to those criteria and then administer passing it along.
And this was new to me. So this is the first time we've asked for it, so yeah. Um the parks restroom kitchen upgrades are actually at Riverdale Regional Park in the buildings.
Okay.
Which is uh the Alleser, the Dome and the Exhibit Hall. They're not eligible with open space funding, so.
Oh, they're not.
So that would be a general fund ask. We don't have other funds that we could do that with. Um and it's also, we have ADA upgrades in there. We're looking at adding um gender neutral restrooms at each of the buildings. Um these are things those buildings just don't have currently, so you know, and and if there's money, there's money. If there's not, there's not. It it's just, it is what it is. Veterans Memorial Amphitheater was a general fund project and it had a match from um a federal HUD grant um initially. And um it's um uh you had put that money on hold for right now anyway. So it's in um the twenty twenty five budget to be to be held, but um there's no expenditures planned for that moving forward.
Okay.
Bum Gardner, same kind of thing. It can't use open space money for the for the development of a building or the improvements of a building. We could enhance with open space around it and we do have some plans eventually to do that if we have the money. However, um to do the building, to do the fixes on the building, it would, it couldn't be open space fund. And Doug, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of that. And then the fourth barn would be the the same thing. It wouldn't be an open space um eligible project.
That is very helpful. Thank you.
And then the Golf Enterprise um pays for all of its, none none of that's general fund. It pays for all those improvements.
Yeah, not worried about the the Golf Enterprise. They seem fine.
They seem to do their thing. That's great.
Very healthy.
So you can.
Nice, because so frequently that's not a thing. Like, I feel like in local governments, golf courses and swimming pools are just gonna sink you every time.
Yeah.
Usually get subsidized. Yep, and ours does not, which is really great. It's really run well.
Nice.
Um as you can see in twenty twenty six, if you look at the Open Space Projects Fund for twenty twenty six. The one project that really, the two projects that get funded are the fours, the South Platte River Coalition Project. Which we've been putting money into every year and the Maui Flood District is gonna match. And there's grants and we're going for the GOCO grant on that. And then Riverdale uh Bluffs is the one that's taking up a big part of the funding. There's funding available for acquisitions. And then the other things are infrastructure things we need to keep the system running. Irrigation repairs, concrete repairs, system wide uh improvements to bridges and fixing turf. And fixing um problems that we run into. Somebody knocks down a sign, somebody uh vandalizes a restroom. It's having money to kind of replace, fix or repair those things.
Okay, that's very helpful. Thank you for walking that through for me. Those that carry forward, um that's free twenty twenty five dollars that you're bringing forward. And it's dedicated to these specifically, so Riverdale Bluffs and then the irrigation infrastructure.
Yes, they've been improved in previous um CIP planning processes and previous budgets and allocated to those um those items.
Okay. I don't have anything else.
Okay, and then next, these are a list of some of the unfunded things that are out there. Um that you've talked about, the communities talked about, that you know, there there's a need for. Clear Creek, South Platte, Confluence, Regional Open Space Park. And these are big things. So one thing I would add to the list and and to your point from earlier, Julie, would be restroom conversions. Like one thing we'd wanna do is at Rotella Park, we have porta potties. We'd like to convert those to restrooms. We know we don't have the money right now, but that would be something that we would want to do. And try to plan even within that park enhancements and small construction project money out of the open space fund over time. We would try to do those one by one where we could, we could afford to get those done. Um i- 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 for example, even the uh Riverdale Regional Park on on the last slide, sorry. I'll go backwards. Uh irrigation, infrastructure improvements. Um if you, if you've noticed the last few years, we've had our entire park go. The irrigation like shut down for weeks at a time, several times in the last few years. We don't have redundancy in the system. And right now, Riverdale Regional Park takes eighteen hours to water it. And we're adding things with these new projects that's gonna push it to twenty or more hours. So that means our irrigation's essentially running all day long. Um one, it's not good to water when it's the heat of the day. That's the worst time to water. The water just evaporates and you're you're wasting water. And then for two, we have no redundancy. So when the system goes down, we have no way to water for a few weeks. So building a second pump house to be able to split that up is something that we wanna do. Not called out specifically, but it's within one of those line items. But as we look at the future projects, um you can see the acquisitions list and I I listed Strasburg on um.
Right.
The map also.
And that little yellow pullout?
Yeah, and so we'd love to be able to do something here, but seeing our our staffing situation and also the funding. We don't have a lot of money to do it. Now would be the time. This property right here is in the middle of town. It's right next to the school complex and right next to the park complex. If somebody buys it and develops it, it's gonna cut that off from most of this side of the community. It would be a perfect place for kids to be able to walk through there to be able to get to school. We went out and looked at the property. We've met with the property owner. He's not asking much money for it. What was the asking price? Seven hundred thousand dollars to get a fourteen acre property that includes a historic farm. I mean, it would be the property to get. Problem is, we we know the situation with money. We did not ask for any FTE in this year's budget because we know the situation. We know what the county is going through. There just isn't a way to maintain it. And we'd love to buy it and hand it to the district. We met and had lunch with the the director of the district and and asked, what if we bought it and handed it to you? And they said, we're in the same position you're in. We couldn't maintain it. We'd love to have it, but we just couldn't maintain it. So you know, there are opportunities. There's two opportunities for trail corridors. There's a trail that goes across the top of Strasburg, but no connected activity south on either of these um repairing corridors. And it would be ideal, and this goes down to about Colfax, which is where the border is with Arapahoe County ideally. And I've had conversation with Arapahoe County. We'd love to connect with them and let them continue to trail south. And then in the future, look at the possibility of taking the trail north. We just, we don't have the money to do it or to maintain it is the challenge. If we took on something in Strasburg right now, given our staffing situation, we could not maintain it. We we would be trailing equipment and driving staff out there to maintain it. Um or we would need enough staff to be able to station people out there and we can't pull them away from, you know, maintaining what we have now. So we want to do these things. We want to do these things, but we understand there just is not the the funding right now to do it. But they are in the future plans because, you know, as soon as we could afford to do it, it really makes sense. Now's the time really to try to expand out to Strasburg. It really makes sense. It's just a matter of, um you know, we we could make the uh the next year, we could potentially make the purchase happen. With our three hundred thousand dollar acquisition money, we could get a grant to match it. Uh it's a thirty percent match. And we could afford to buy this infill property next year. It's just maintaining it would be the challenge.
It's on that land right now.
So it's a house. It's a farm and it's a number of farming outbuildings. And he's got, I wanna say, two hundred historic tractors spread throughout the property that are really cool. I don't know if they come with the property or not, but they're housed in all these buildings and um there's a maintenance structure. We could, we could put equipment in it. We could operate out of it. Um it's, it's just a ma- again, a matter of having the staff out there.
How big is it again?
Fourteen acres.
Fourteen acres. Have we looked at Historical Societies or History Colorado to potentially partner?
We've not, but we have talked to the Strasburg um Historical Society that would love those tractors. And there is a, there is a group down there. Their their museum is just south of Colfax on the Arapahoe County side. But they serve, you know, mostly uh at at as many Adams County residents as Arapahoe County residents. And they'd be interested in partnering with us. It's just just maintaining the property. They don't have the staffing for that.
Is the owner, could he maintain it?
He wants to live on the land, um but he's gotten to a point where he can't, he's too old to be able to continue to maintain it. That's the challenge. What he wants to do, he wants a deal where he can live on the lands, which we've done before. But he lives on the land um until he dies and then then we take over his house essentially. And his house would make sense to run staff out of if we were ever gonna do that. But um really a a cool situation and it's the perfect property. It's just, you know, the the question is, what do you want us to do? Um and I know we don't have the money, so we've not, you know, we've not listed it as a as a priority.
Well, this lists the priorities that have been established. When has this been reviewed last? When do we reprioritize when opportunities like this come up?
Right now, yeah.
Or as we move through budget.
Part of the, a reason for the conversation today. And looking at what we've previously approved and and kind of worked on priorities. But given some of the needs that we have, um you know, and this point is well taken about the budget situation. Are these priorities that still make sense? Um you know, kind of future planning, some some direction, this is, you know, where where we landed now. But I think this is really the beginning of that conversation.
So here's my struggle is Bennett has done a really fantastic job, Trish and. Um her elected town members, um they've done an excellent job planning and their planning has really paid off. You know, tenfold because they've won a lot of open space grants. They have parks that they're working on. They, they're really well on their way. Strasburg is all in unincorporated Adams County. So we're doing the Strasburg area plan for them. Um they do need some help. As far as, we're it. It's just like, well, we're it. We're the backstop. We're, we're the, you know, the pitching crew out there. Um it is hard for me to continue to justify, and I know you put one point two million visitors. At the regional park, which includes the golf courses, both golf courses, which are doing really phenomenal. And they'll do great going in, you know, when they complete. So they're both at eighteen holes. Um they're at nine holes each right now while they're under construction. The Veterans Memorial has been off the chart on visitors and it is so well received. Um by, and and the residents are just, they're very, very proud of that memorial and it gets a lot of accolades everywhere we go. Um so I know that, you know, the 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 narrative when I got onto the commission was. It's because density is here. And I don't wanna ever see density like we have here out in east, out in Strasburg and Watkins, in Bennett. Um people, not only for quality of life, of, you know, housing. And you know, people want to choose what their housing situation is. Some have rural acreage. My parents have some rural acreage. Um you know, I live in a mass, in a development community. I I have a patio home. So people wanna live to their lifestyle and I don't wanna see density out there. But it's also not fair that the narrative is if they grow twenty times their size now, which they will. Um you know, no one thought Brighton would grow. We thought that that was gonna be a little farming town forever. Um that they also deserve amenities. And now is the time, you know, if we look at the next ten to fifteen, twenty years, which is the lens that this board is looking at. You know, we wanna get out of the day to day and hand that all over to Dion. And so that's why this budget process is so important. Um you've only been with us, Dion, like two months and you're doing amazing. Almost three. So anyway, I am in support of purchasing that. I hear you on maintenance, that maintenance is a challenge. Um I don't know what that would look like. I don't know if the school can maintain it. I don't know if we, we, I I I just don't know. I have not talked to um anybody. The I seventy REIT group gets together. I think it's quarterly. We have one coming up in October. Um I was pulled aside by a gentleman and maybe he's the owner of that. Um to really look at that for all the things that you said, that it ties the school, that it's a great location. Um to have land preservation. So I I hear that. I hear amenities that, you know, we're gonna do the Bluffs. And we're gonna do Riverdale Regional Park. And there's a three par golf course that's been kind of around. There's Willow Bay. Those are all very, very centrally located and, you know, they started their own. That we went back to Bennett days plural and you, I don't know if you went to any of that. They were very excited about it when we met the with the town of Bennett a couple of weeks ago. Um that they had like a little rodeo situation going on out there. And so our folks in um, you know, Byers, Deer Trail, Strasburg, Bennett, Watkins. They need amenities and they need, we do need a county presence out there. Um so I. And they need, we do need a county presence out there. Um, so I, I understand our budget situation. But dumping millions and millions, tens of millions of dollars, you know, everything east, west of I seventy-six. I just really have a challenge of, they're asking, the ask is seven hundred thousand dollars. I know maintenance and and personnel is something different. But, um, I would be a green light for that, that purchase. That would be me.
Commissioner, I would absolutely agree that now is the time. You know, we bought that Lawrence Construction Property, which was down at the Confluence here. At um, uh, the Confluence of the South Platte and Clear Creek. And we got about three acres for five million. To get fourteen acres for seven hundred thousand right in the middle of town. It really is a no brainer. It's just, I don't have a way to maintain it. And we've talked to the district, we've talked to the schools. They don't have a way to maintain it is the problem. It's it that's. It absolutely makes sense to buy it now, but knowing the buzzet budget situation, that's why we didn't ask for people. But we, we, we can't maintain it from here, not, not in a way that. And and it needs a little development. I mean, the trail needs to be brought through the property to get to the school to make that connection. Um, so there's a little bit of money that needs to be spent if if it's gonna be done. But I I agree. I I think the time is absolutely now. If we're gonna do it before we're spending five million for a property like that, even you can even get it.
So I hear what Lynn is saying. Um. I also don't see a path to getting you, cause it would have to be independent staff. It'd probably have to be one or two independent staff. Which just for F T Es, let alone equipment, is probably a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, which is something that we just don't. Like have the extra of right now. Um. What does, uh, you said the property owner is interested in like a leaseback or a life tenancy or like one of those? Land use.
We can have further conversation to see if he thinks he can maintain it, but the reason he's trying to sell it is he says he can't. But we can have further conversation about that, cause that that was, um, that was the initial conversation we had with him. But they 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 really do wanna get it sold.
Well, I couldn't maintain it either, so fourteen acres is a lot. Um, also, what's up with all the tractors? What would that look like?
And we haven't explored that, just pending having a conversation with you.
I think there's opportunity. I mean, and and maybe, I know that History Colorado has done a lot of land preservation in places like this. I mean.
I'm thinking that too.
There are state agencies that are really looking at trying to preserve, especially agricultural heritage, which it seems like a prime candidate for.
It is.
Try and find a partner to make this.
And and I agree with that. And then for me, yes to that. And it's not like it would be purchased and maintained and grow dusty. Especially if the farm equipment was able to stay and there was a maintenance plan for that. This looks like it's right for school field trips as well. And like, what does that look like? What does activation look like by partners who are not us?
So I think another opportunity, Commissioner, is there's some open space on the property where they could do community events. That would, it would be a no brainer.
Fields perhaps?
Um, and not, not necessarily. I think you'd wanna keep it open space to keep that farm field. But to do events, um, Strasburg Days right now is just done on, you've been out there for it. It's just done on the high school property. If it could expand to this property, it would ch- change the game for that event. And I mean, I I've been talking about it, but we have a resident of Strasburg sitting next to me. His kid goes to the schools and he gets it. I mean, Trevor could speak to it, but it it really is a unique property.
I, I have to dodge kids every morning on my way home because there's nowhere for them to walk. They can't get from the subdivisions to the school.
That makes sense.
The historical significance of this property and the reason why he hasn't sold it to a developer. Is he doesn't wanna see houses on it. Wants, you know, some type of preservation there. And it was the site of the very first irrigation pivot in the state is.
Interesting.
That is so good.
Well, the History Colorado is like, obviously we're just spitballing here.
We can have a conversation with them.
We're spitballing. And so like, ask that question, um, is this something that could be? Like, what are the partners that could come at the table? What does activation for four H or youth look like? What does this look like? Um. Cause if there was a way or even like for this to be held in Adams County, but not owned by us. You know, if we instead of spending seven hundred thousand dollars to buy it, could take that money and put it towards some maintenance. Like if it's held by a trust or, um, like what are some other options?
The Recreation District makes sense because they have the Historical Society as.
But they also have seven hundred thousand dollars and they should do that.
But they don't. But the the problem really would be the maintenance, the maintenance piece.
Well, we're hearing that there is support here, so why don't we explore?
There's, no, no, there's curiosity.
Well, there's support to continue to look at it.
That can be kind of dangerous sometimes in these conversations. And I feel like I've been part of that in the past. There's curiosity.
Okay, so we can explore a little further about um what other potential funding mechanisms there might be. Other means by which we might be able to pursue maintenance, et cetera. We can bring those things back to you.
I just wanna add one thing to that, just to remind the board that one of your land use decisions in the last couple of years was to approve. A disc golf course and some trails in the Wolf Creek Run subdivision that will all be um owned and maintained by the Metro District. Associated with that neighborhood. So those, you know, using your land use authority to um include those amenities. And trail connections is another element of how we improve access to recreation in Strasburg. And so that's an example of how you've done that in the recent past.
We could incorporate that into further growth out there.
So I appreciate the discussion. Um. You know, if this is a five year plan, I'm gonna really dip my heels in and go all in for our towns and townships. Um, that are all under us. And if that means that, you know, looking at our share back on open space. That we use some of that funding, we're it. We're it in Strasburg. We're it, you know, in Watkins. In Deer Trail, in Byers. There is no other government out there. There is no one out there that is. An ally is advocating for these townships and that falls on us as a county. And so I would even, you know, do we look at the open space um share back funding? I don't know what maintenance looks like. I don't know if it's productive. Um, it's if it's productive farmland. It doesn't sound like the owner wants to be part of it. If it is, you know, the fir- where the first pivot was at. I think that we need to lean in on that and, you know, talk to some partners and really, um. Explore because I'm not going to accept that we can't. Because this board has always been and this county has always been, we can. And we have the grit to get it done. And I'm not gonna accept that we can't do it. I'm not, I'm not gonna accept it from this board. Um. I'm just not. I I, we have, we're talking less than a million dollars. And I understand our current financial situation now. We have spent fifteen times that. To put the USS Colorado Memorial in place. We have spent.
Different time.
Tens of millions of dollars for the Riverdale Regional Park project on master plans. And I'm not going to accept we can't. I'm not. And so if I have to go door to door in Eastern Adams County. To those townships, I will and I will get the support to do it because this is important. This is twenty, this is the next five years. Um, we're also live streaming, so Trevor, you can't go by the land or anyone else can't go by the land. Um.
Don't do it, Trevor.
Don't do it, Trevor. Lawnmower and you can go maintain it, but. I I just think that this is too important for this. Definitely a ride on. That is the thing. You have to have a ride on lawnmower if you have. That's, that's where I'm at. And I know we're gonna get into discussions about, you know, H S C, Support Services needs. Um, this really is a need in our community. Uh, we need to make this work somehow. And so that's where I'm at.
I'm curious. That, that's a lovely enthusiasm. I'm curious. It weighs heavily on me that we just canceled a bunch of housing funding at four point five million. It weighs heavily on me. They're about to have sixty-two thousand residents lose their health insurance. It weighs heavily on me that we're not funding food banks. We canceled all of the funding for all of the school food banks in Adams County. Not a single school district got the food bank funding they asked for. This all weighs heavily on me and I know we're making tough choices. So I'm curious if we can find a partner who can pick up the money. Because I got, I don't know what you guys got, but a series of phone calls from Westminster Public Schools, from Adams Twelve, from all of our food bank school partners. That they're not gonna be able to feed their children as a result of our, how we distributed our community uh funds on Tuesday. So we've got a lot of tough things that we're working through. But uh, from a philosophical open space preservation, parkland preservation, I agree. We're just staring down some hard choices.
Understand.
We are, and I just wanted, I appreciate you bringing that up. Some of the choices were made for us.
Correct.
The state funding was made, that was a choice made upon us. The federal funding was a choice made upon us. So for us to accept and not pivot and deflect, not to say the need isn't there, the need absolutely is there. If you want to bring a solution, Commissioner Pinter, about how we give out grants for community funding. I'm here for it. I'm here for an open discussion. If we want to change how we, we. Not we, how that committee looks at priorities for that funding, I'm here for it. But to drop a bomb on a live stream and saying what you did say, um, and not have a solution. Let's look at the solutions. Let's be solution oriented. Um.
My solution is let's find a partner. Let's find a fiscal partner. Let's find somebody who can pick up the cost of acquisition or or the cost of maintenance. Let's look at C S U. Let's look at four H. Look at, look at History Colorado. Let's look at G O Co. Let's look at land trusts. My solution is like, let's find a fiscal partner. That's my solution.
I think we just gotta look at the Open Space Projects Fund and do some reprioritization. If this is gonna be a new priority for this board, then let's figure out how to make it happen. I mean, we have the money that we get to work with. We have other projects that we've already talked about here that, you know, have already been approved for general fund. I mean, let's just, let's talk about how we move money around to meet our priorities. That's really what the conversation is. Open Space Project Fund money could only be used for certain things. General Fund, we already have some money that we're looking at for some of these. Um, parks projects. I mean, let's, let's try and. Be creative. I, I haven't been part of really any of these conversations when it comes to these priorities. So not married to any of them, um, I'm open to having a discussion about how we reprioritize some of these projects. To move forward. Honestly, for me, opportunities where we could preserve agricultural heritage. In this county, I think has become more and more apparent to me, given the fact that we're continuing to grow. And it, it kind of breaks my heart a little bit to think that one day we might not see, you know. Areas like that, that lot right there. There, I mean, they're gonna get taken up unless we are diligent and active. In preserving them. So I, I would love to see that be a priority for this group moving forward. Is how do we continue to preserve? Um, and how do we work with partners to preserve? That's what's gonna be really important. We're gonna need some strong partnerships. Um, because it's important to the character of this community and the next generation when we think about, you know, what kind of Adams County they're gonna have.
You know, it, there's two parts. I just wanna separate out a little bit because I do think this has been really valuable for us to hear priorities. I think having that lens, when we go back to sort of the five priorities that that you listed at the beginning. Uh, we need to make sure that we're tracking this uh priority. And I think one of the buckets is Eastern Adams, what that looks like, right? Funding for the acquisition, I think there's lots of opportunity and lots of ways we can do that. Part of the conversations next week and ongoing is really around, I think, the slide on the human capacity to maintain. Long-term planning, we want to support the priorities of the board and we wanna be able to continue to maintain. Fully and staff and and support ongoing maintenance of all those assets. And I think there's two parts that we need to explore. Because I don't, I don't actually think the acquisition of the, the property is the biggest challenge. I think it's actually. The F T E model, whatever that looks like, to maintain this fully and any asset that we're purchasing going forward. You know, what is that gonna look like? Because we are constrained there and probably will continue to be. And maybe it's looking at a future F T E request. Is that supported? Is that something that we actually are gonna be able to, to do? Um, so I just wanna go to highlight this. I think there's two uh aspects that we're trying to balance and manage with this. And we probably need to talk about both.
What about contract maintenance? I mean, given the fact that it's so far away from everything else that we have. I mean, the distance is real. I mean, does it just make more sense?
Conversation to contract with the, the district out there, the Recreation District. And they'd be willing. We just, we would need to pay them. So we would just need funding to be able to, to, to spend on.
Funding are we talking about here? Like a million dollars?
Number with them, we can. But yeah, that's one, that's one opportunity we would, we'd love to be able to look at having them maintain it. And I think they'd be willing if we could, we could pay them to do it.
Graphically, right? I understand it's isolated, so it's tough. Um, but I mean, I don't know. What solution makes the most sense financially is what I can see.
And we could have further conversation with the district to see what it would cost them to maintain it. And we also need to better understand too what the owner is gonna take care of and what isn't. This opportunity came just after all of this was developed. Also, just so you know, Strasburg's always been a priority for us to try to get to. And we've had some false starts out there. But this one just came to us through the Strasburg Plan, through C E D. That, that's how, that's how we got this opportunity and we jumped on and went out and looked at it. So, um, so we'll, we'll definitely pursue it further and and come back to um, to Dion and Alicia. And, and to you with um, what we learned from Strasburg, from the Historical Society and of course through the owner.
Work on that. Do you guys have anything further?
Just.
No.
I took that picture, so.
We also will be bringing you an update, um, presentation on bluffs. And so that's coming up as well. Uh, just a conversation about how we wanna proceed with.
Thank you very much.
Bigger map.
If we can just, um. Take some time to look at that last slide and then come back with feedback for you.